Very similar. Any questions?
I guess I don't have any other questions, anybody else on the board?
The only thing, I saw on their, on your map or whatever, that the tower is actually constructed basically in the north or southwest corner of lot one.
Yep, north of that building, yep.
That's the only thing, that's why I wanted to clarify, make sure that was.
Yep.
The actual site, because then you still have lot two between where the tower.
Yeah, it won't even, like I said, if something did happen, it wouldn't even hit the right away there, so, yes, yep.
But it is in, it is in lot one on the north or the southwest corner.
Correct.
It's two feet wide?
At the base, yep, it's a triangle, two feet wide, then at that forty to thirty, thirty to forty foot, I believe it goes to sixteen or eighteen inches.
So it won't even be that visible.
No, well, not with the other, I mean, it will blend right in with the.
With everything else in there.
We will not allow anybody else access to it, it's in a secured gated facility, so we will not allow anybody else to hang any other equipment on there.
All right, I guess if there's no more questions from the board, that's all we need. I guess I would open it up to anybody from the audience that wants to come up and speak on this conditional use permit. Yep, come on up and state your name for the record.
My name's Tim Kellen, I am at thirty-seven ten Christie Lane, so I'm the house directly behind the facility that we're talking about. Got no problem with the pole, my problem is a point-to-point, I'm guessing is a microwave shot.
Yes.
So, just would ask the community to do a study on, I mean, it's the irony of it is when we were going through this to even put this there, you guys told us, so I was like standing in front of your microwave, well, no longer is it standing in front of our microwave, microwave shot at us, consistent twenty-four by seven, and if it's coming from the Gavin's Point Dam one, which is higher, that wave is now shooting down at us, so, I just ask, there'd be some type of study as far as there's any health issues with that. Sixty feet with the angle that it's pointing, I mean, personally, my home, probably not so much because of where they're going to locate it and where the shot's coming from, I'm more to the side, but clearly, the people down on the corner could be affected, so, something I think is important for everybody to know, this is, a point-to-point wireless is a microwave shot. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this conditional use permit? Seeing none, I will close it to, close.
How long is conditional, or is it, this is forever, it's not a temporary shot, correct?
Right, as long as they continue the.
As long as it's in operation, that's how you'll communicate.
Right.
You never communicate like putting a, like having an internet brought in there?
Long-term, we want to have fiber, it's just the network isn't ready yet.
Right, right. So there's a time period on this?
There is, I'd, I'd be lying if I throw a date out there.
Oh.
Oh yes, there is plans to have fiber.
All right, I will close the public comment for discussion.
Do we have, do you have any statistics at all, as far as what he's talking about?
Come on up.
I don't, but I can, I'll definitely ask our experts.
One thing I do know, they did an internet, an internet line down Deer Boulevard last year, and there was grants for fiber casing or whatever, so when they did the line, they did do a fiber casing down right across the street from that location, I don't know when that's going in, I just thought I'd put that out there. I guess, just thought I'd say that.
Do they have to have fiber running down Deer Boulevard, because I'm getting a gig of internet right now, so, it has to be running over fiber.
Okay, so.
It's got to be in the area, all right?
Yeah, so they.
It's just a matter of them connecting.
So what, what happened is, that service is maxed out with Mid-Continent, so I had to trench in a Mid-Continent line myself, because they're running out of signal, so when they did that, and then before that, Keith Tacheck, I forgot his company's name, put in an additional casing for fiber, as far as I know, I'd have to confirm that with him, but when they were doing the work, I talked to the workers from Mid-Continent, and that's what they told me. There again, I mean, I don't know when that's gonna go in, but it's a step in the right direction.
When I say fiber, we won't run on a, on a public fiber, we'll run our own private network, we don't want to be running on a, on a public network with what, with everybody's power.
So I'm assuming that if we don't approve this, the substation will not work?
It will work, but it won't work how it needs to with this high, I mean, there's going to be a lot of load, a lot of power going through and growth. It's definitely required to do it right and safe, and be, you know, to be able to monitor and reroute the power as we need, but it would not be very functional without these comms and controls.
Do you have another point-to-point in Yankton County at all? Another antenna that communicates with the one up on?
There's some WAPA towers south of the river that, I don't know where everything goes, which direction, but there are, there are more.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to microwave point-to-point, I'm insult, and I'm just curious as to the angle that the blast is coming from, to where it's going, because usually a point-to-point is higher up, and is over all buildings, and it's more of a parallel shock than it is a shock going down like this one would be.
Okay, I guess on this, this is about the same thing that you put up on the other substation, just rate a couple miles away, there hasn't been any issues with that that I've heard of. I guess, from my standpoint, I look at this, from what we have to check off, as far as the zoning ordinance, it meets everything in our ordinance, and I guess, as far as a safety standpoint, I don't know that we can order a study on something like that. The safety that we can concern ourselves with, like setbacks and everything else, to me, it looks like, even if the tower didn't break in half like they're saying, and the whole thing fell over, it's still going to be on their own property, by the way that they've set it back, so I don't see an issue there. Everything else on it seems to be in place. And then, as far as operationally, like you said, it's not going to, the substation isn't going to operate safely, and I think that's probably more of a direct hazard than a microwave, so I guess I don't see an issue in moving forward.
No, I agree, I think that, you know, they use them on the water system and on electrical system with the load monitor systems and all, that's all controlled, by radio frequency, you know, things that control, basically, that's how the world was controlled anymore, was by electronics.
It's not a radio signal, this is a microwave.
I understand that, but telephone, there used to be a microwave tower west of Yankton that was at the telephone signal, for like forty years ago.
Where did, where were the signals? Was it parallel, or was it shooting down?
Well.
Just asking, would you guys like something shooting down at you like that? Not knowing? It's a fair question.
Can I ask, what would be, if this study was to be done, what would be the delay in your timeframe, how critical?
We want to have this up ideally before the Fourth of July, that was when the, when the load hits the, hits a pretty good peak, starts hitting, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it gets pretty high. We do have some staff in-house that I will reach out to in the morning, and, I mean, like I said, we've got hundreds of, hundreds of these towers out there, so I'm sure we've looked into similar scenarios, I, I just don't know the exact numbers there, so I'll have to ask our people that do know, when I get back tomorrow.
So just me thinking out loud here, if we just pass this tonight, and you can have something, some kind of education by county commission time, this, this is just my thoughts, it's, if you guys have different opinion, I guess, but if you can have something, it's what, thirty days bill or something like that?
Yeah, they'd meet the Fourth of April.
Yeah, so, I don't know, like you, obviously, you might not even know a timeframe, but at the commission level, maybe we can have something by then, and we just pass it tonight?
Just make that a condition.
Right.
Okay.
So I guess I would entertain a motion to, to approve the conditional use permit on condition that they have some more information on the hazards of the microwaves by the county commission meeting on April fourth.
Second.
All right, we can do a vote when you're ready.
Merkel.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. All right, thanks, guys. On to the FRIC variance, applicant is requesting a variance to minimum lot size in an agricultural district, applicant wishes to replot one previously plotted non-conforming lot into two lots each smaller than twenty acres per Article eighteen, Section eighteen oh seven, said property is legally described as plats of lot one and two of J and P FRIC addition in the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter, section eight, and in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of section seventeen, T ninety-four north, range fifty-five west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, nine-one-one address is three zero four nine nine, southwest Jim River Road, Yankton County. This plat vacates, we're actually just doing the variance, not the plat, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The plat, yeah, first.
All right, is there anybody here to present on this variance? Come on up.
Hello, this is, I'm Chris Frick, and what we're looking at doing is my folks' house out there, it's on like eighteen acres of land, and my sister and her husband are looking to buy my parents' home, and how we, we kind of have a setup amongst us, as I built out there on like nine acres, and we, Dad actually has a place fenced off, which we thought was already plotted for nine point eight or ten acres, which we find out it wasn't. So basically, all we want to do is, and I had Tom Weeks out there, he surveyed it already to come to like nine point some odd acres, and this is kind of coming up the driveway over to his house, and it'll encompass the house and the shed, and, does it come down like nine point something?
Six.
Nine point six, whatever.
So this is, this part is eleven point six two, and this is nine point nine seven, so this property line, or this line here would be this line on beacon, so they want to.
Add in where that fence is.
Add it, so it encompasses the house.
Right.
And then they would divide it right about here, and make a second lot there.
And then the second lot would be in a census pasture like it is now, and hunting area, so.
So, I guess, why wouldn't you replat that smaller lot up there into the larger lot that's adjacent to it?
So which, which one would be built there?
Beacon.
Yeah, so I can see.
Are you asking, Chris, this part, just add it to this?
Right, or, or, I guess, just looking at it, if you add it in, instead of splitting, I guess I don't understand why you're splitting that smaller lot to add in that little piece instead of just adding the piece to it.
I guess, I mean, here's where the, like the house is, whatever, this is all pasture ground, and then this is when Dad bought this stuff, you know, this is always separate from the FRIC land here, so we just want to kind of keep that part separate from the rest of the, of the property, and if we can, if we can partition off this way to this way, we just thought it easier if we just come up the fence line here, go over this fence line, and square off, really thought the easiest thing to do.
I guess the easiest from our zoning ordinance standpoint would have been just to add that small chunk at the bottom into that lot and not separate the lot. Yeah, add that to that.
Still would have been non-compliant either way.
No, it would have had, if you put it up there and didn't split that top lot, it would be over twenty acres.
So the issue here was, though, is that there was a previous plat before, before the ordinance was put in place, that was where they approved the non-compliant lot to start with, so, so that's kind of the hardship here, is because, you know, in zoning, you generally, hardship means that it's usually difficult for the landowner to comply to regulations because of some unique or peculiar aspect of the property, and, and that was, that was the concern to start with, is that there was already a plat that was non-compliant to start with for that area, and so they're just trying to separate the house from the hunting and pasture area, which, if that plat, wouldn't have been platted there, they could have already just platted out the building, and it wouldn't have been an issue, but that's kind of what's going on in this situation.
So Gary, so the non-conforming lot you're talking about is what's highlighted in blue right now, right?
Yeah, it's right in that blue square there.
And that's about seventeen acres, so what I'm saying is if they would have just added the bottom little chunk that incorporates the house into that, it would have made that lot over twenty acres.
Right, right, but they, they were trying to separate the pasture and hunting area too, so that's why they requested the variance.
Okay, and I guess, at the same time, why didn't the zoning office recommend adding the top little nine acres or whatever into the rest of the lot, so we don't have two non-conforming lots then?
We did, but this is how they wanted to do it and apply for the variance.
Okay, and I guess, what is the reasoning for having, keeping two non-conforming lots instead of just, I guess I could understand wanting to separate out the house and stuff, but then, that top lot, you can make conforming by just adding it into the other larger lot next to it.
Because then it'll be torn acres, right?
Well, if you would add that top little chunk, that's going to be like nine, and if you wanted to just, like right now, we've got one non-conforming lot, if you, if we approve it the way that your variance is, we're going to have two non-conforming lots.
Okay.
So we're going to come out of compliance with our zoning ordinance more.
Okay.
If we were going to stay on par with what we've got, with one non-conforming lot, incorporate your house like you, like you're talking, and then that top lot, adding it into the one that's adjacent to the west there, because it's all the same ownership, by my understanding, that would make it one non-conforming lot.
So just keep going west then, instead of north.
Are you saying?
It's like if you bring up that plat, bring up the plat again.
Add the top part.
Yep, that lot two, add to the west part.
Yeah, so you would incorporate this into this parcel?
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, you're, you're wanting to add it to the.
Yeah, so then you'd have.
So they'd unplot it basically and take it.
Put it with that other larger piece.
Put it with the larger piece, and then just plot off.
And then just, then you'd have just the farmstead by itself, and then that would be more in compliance with our zoning ordinance, otherwise, you're asking us to.
We are, we sold, this is Kim Mueller, Pam and Jack Fricks, his sister, we sold our home in town, Hope for addition, beautiful home, moved out there January one to care for my folks, living in their basement, okay? So we are there, at some point in life, when they deceased, passed away, we were going to attempt all this, we're there now, and they can't care for themselves, they can't go into an assisted living, Dan and I are taking care of them, they have a shed, a house, ten acres, that's already kind of sectioned off, I don't want to be taxes on twenty acres, we don't want to start dividing up Dad's land, twenty acres, this has been there twenty-two years, as is, so we didn't know it'd even be an issue, when we sold our home, I never thought for one second that this would be an issue, that I couldn't buy my mom and dad's house and take care of them till they pass away, so that's why we're here, I had no clue.
Yep, I understand, so you're talking that on the replat up here, where we had the lots one and two, you're talking that you guys are going to buy lot one with the house?
I just want, yeah, I just want the house, the shed, the little acreage, I don't, we don't, I mean, we don't want to start carving up twenty acres of this right now.
Right, so I guess what I was suggesting wouldn't change your lot one, I'm just talking about that lot two to make it in compliance, so we're not.
By adding to the west.
By adding to the west. So that would leave the lot one, which is incorporating the house in the building.
Keeps us at under ten, I sure can't afford.
Check this out, I like, what you're saying makes sense to me, I think so.
We had, we've gone through a lot with, with Tom, and so, Chris, I understand that if they could parcel off this as a homestead, and take this piece and add it to this.
Right.
Or, or excuse me, just cut off enough to make it twenty acres, and make a separate parcel here.
Well, yeah, either make it a twenty-acre lot there, or just add it into the whole lot, so that we're not more out of compliance than we already are.
You guys follow that?
Yeah.
They're, they're.
And that would not require a there.
I know.
So, Dan, we go back to the, they just take the building, and you hear, this would be the farmstead.
Yeah.
And we take this here, here, just attach it to here.
So you can either make twenty there, or just put it in that whole chunk, either way.
And end up with twenty acres.
No, no.
No.
So, the ordinance allows, the ordinance allows a farmstead to be platted out with all twenty acres, so you can, as long as you encompass all the buildings, you can go here, 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 and it would have the same amount of acres, but you have to add this to part of this or to all of it, so this is conforming, so this is going to have to add equal twenty acres or more, so you still have your, your farmstead separate with your.
If that's something that, yeah, that would, that would definitely at least make the one lot compliant, and then the other one could fall under five thirteen, so.
And then, basically, you're thinking if it was in compliance, then they wouldn't even need a variance later on.
They wouldn't need a variance at all, who would do that?
The building's ours remains the same, this will remain the same, you just have to take this and add it to this piece, or cut off enough nine acres, and make this a twenty-acre lot, this will still stay the same, you just have to have a new plat drawn, and then you won't need a variance for that.
The process actually, for you guys, is easier to do it that way, and as far as getting it approved, you'd have a much easier time.
Yeah, just the plat.
It's just the plat.
We're throwing this thing out there too, now let's see, we do that, and my brother wants to come back and wants ten acres out of that twenty.
You can't do that.
No.
You'd have to have the twenty.
And that's what they were discussing.
She would like to come back and.
Well, the issue is that we have the ordinance at twenty acres because it's not supposed to be residential area, and so that's why the twenty-acre rule is there, and we've been strict about enforcing that in the past, if you're wanting to go down to smaller lot sizes, then you'd be looking at doing a rezone to do that, as far as doing a variance, so that you can add a row of houses, basically, on the land and ten-acre chunks or whatever, that's not going to really fly.
Well, to me, that, that makes sense, or whether you have the elevated means of encouraging these comes back, you have to, you have to.
Right, right, and then to be fair for all three kids, and twenty acres has to be divided up, so now we have to go back and, you know.
I guess, all I can tell you is what our zoning ordinance says and what we've done in the past, I guess we're not here to mediate family issues, but.
Well, and that, yeah.
Well, we're trying to, how this affects the future.
To me, on the thing, though, was when it came right up and said that you had a non-conforming lot to start with.
Sure.
So now, I for one would not vote for making two non-conforming lots out of one, I mean, that, that's where the uphill thing is, because you're, we're, our deal has always been, we've ran into a lot of non-conforming lots before, and if they were moving toward making it closer to being conforming, adding a couple more acres to it or doing something to it, we would, most of the time, just about every time, approve it, because they were trying to make it better, but in this case, you're trying to go the other way, make it less, and that, if we open, that kind of warms up, we'll have a real mess.
Well, for me, we've got to address this issue, and I think that makes sense to me.
We're better re-plating.
And we'll address the other one if the time comes if it does.
So, would you like to withdraw your variance application and?
We have to.
Yeah, that's.
I'd like to add the plat.
Okay.
Okay, so it's going to work, then they withdrew their application for the variance and the plat, and they're going to look at a different option.
Okay.
So what do we got to do from here then?
Just.
Tom, we're to. Okay.
So are we to vote on it, or are we just?
No, it's a withdrawal, so we don't need to vote.
Postpone it or whatever, or?
No.
Tell them to come back and.
Yep, if they withdraw their application, then we don't.
There's no motion needed.
There's no vote, no nothing.
No motion.
We just move on to the next item. All right. Next agenda item is Article four in maps. I think it's up a little bit.
So, basically, we've updated the map.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Trying to get this to fit here. So that, the parcels that have been changed, have changed zoning district, are now reflected on this map, so it'll update the master map that we keep in our office, these are all updated, and there was a update of semantics here.
Just changed the name to the new ordinance, so when we redid the ordinance, it still had the old name, so that's the only thing in Article four that's changing.
Okay, and the map, when was the last time it was updated?
It's been like three, three years now, with all those new RT zones, everything things, so.
So this just shows everything that was basically approved for rezones for the last several years.
Well, it's the last year.
This is the terminology, terminology change that was made, just.
And the, the maps will be, what you're, we're approving or proposing now will be good till tomorrow, right?
Well, yeah, because we don't have the applications, so at least sixty days.
Anytime we make a change, it's about two days afterward, somebody comes in with something wanting to change it again.
I think we're good for a while.
That's why we don't do every plot, because we want to wait till a few of them.
So, I'm sorry, have a discussion, when, when it's time, we just need a recommendation to move this to the county commission for their approval.
So you want a motion on that?
If, once you're done with your discussion, that's all we'd like, yes.
Okay.
I don't have any discussion, unless you guys do.
I'll make a motion to move the suggestion or whatever on to the board of adjustment or whatever.
For approval.
Second.
And Kathy jumped the gun there, but we'll give her credit.
Alright, uh, go ahead and do roll call when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
I guess I didn't go back through the last three years worth of applications and make sure you highlighted the right areas. I didn't go back through the applications for the last three years to make sure the right areas were highlighted.
I'll dig them out for you.
I trust you. Looks about right. Alright. I guess we already did the Smith plat, Frick plat was withdrawn. Then we're just on to the discussion on the ideas to promote economic growth in the county.
So as you recall, Don brought up back in December to you all about possibly thinking about some ideas about economic development in the county. And he's got a couple ideas that he's gonna throw at me here pretty quick, but he was just wondering if any of you had any specific ideas of things you may want to do or try and do, um, you know, whether, whether that's changing some setbacks again to try and make things easier or, or creating smaller lots, you know, whatever we think might, might work to, to get that, get some of that moving in the county. And, you know, the hundred and twenty-seven acres that we did for RT last year is obviously a huge help. And so hopefully some of those will be able to move forward in, in the near future. Some of the concerns that there's been is, is, you know, we, the rural water and things have to come up with their master plan too of how to try and accomplish those things. So, so I sent all those people the standards of what they are looking for to, to try and move forward in those areas. But anything like that that you can think of or ideas of you had, that you might want, you know, something out in those areas, that's just the, the discussion that Don wanted to have, so I don't know if anybody had anything specific they were thinking about.
I guess I had a couple ideas on it. I think that in like the ag zone districts, development is pretty much restricted to almost nothing. Because, well, you're not gonna have any residential because of the twenty acres. You're not going to have any ag development, which is what the district is intended for, but you're not gonna have any of that because of the setbacks. So, um, I think as a county, I need to choose what we're going to do. And I guess personally, I think that being able to do ag development in an ag zone district would be very beneficial to the county because you take an eight or ten thousand dollar an acre piece of land at most and put a million dollar facility on it, you're going to create a lot of tax base there for the county. That's gonna provide jobs and revenue in the county. And I think since we've basically been having all the zoning talks and, and discussions and controversy over all of this, basically the development ag zone districts has gone down to nothing. And I guess the other area that I think that we need to look at, and I don't know what we actually have the power to do as a zoning board, but one of the biggest issues with developing out and about, like say in the lake area or any of this rural transition area is utilities and especially like the water. Is that something that we can get, like say BYwater in here to tell us where they have the capacity for development, what it's going to take for development to occur in those areas? Like, do we need to have an area where there's X amount of houses or whatever approved for development there before they'll put in a line? Or is there an area where they've already got capacity where it's a rural transitional area and we could rezone that and open it up for development? But we don't know any of that information unless we could get them in here to tell us.
They did basically send me their requirements of what they need beforehand to, to even look at it. And so that was sent to all the people that got rezoned and I can send that all to you too. So Article five, currently we're looking at. So Chris, what were you thinking that the setbacks should be changed to, cause we're at fifty feet all around right now?
So it'd be on like the CUP setbacks where it's so many feet per animal unit.
Oh, okay, I see what you're getting at.
Pretty restrictive. And then also there is no process in the zoning ordinance where if you would have, basically the way it's written, if you have one neighbor that even if they're on the fringes of that setback area, then, and they say no, there is no process for you to appeal that or anything else, you're pretty much just out.
Okay.
Where a lot of the other things in the ordinance, you can at least appeal it.
Okay.
There was some, um, I'm not sure if it passed or not, but there was a bill that was before the legislature this year that about, I think it was ten ninety or something like that, I don't remember what the number was, but about this kind of particular thing about someone from out of state that maybe owns some land next to your facility that you're wanting to bu- build cannot restrict you from building that thing, cause they're not a resident, you have to be lived within a mile of the facility. And I don't know where that went or if it ever, if it passed or not, but. And personally though, back when Don first brought this up and he got talking about economic development, the very first thing that hit in my head, and I've been stewing on it for the last two months. Infrastructure in this county is terrible. And you want to develop, you want to develop something, you need roads, you need electricity. You can't come in like where your campgrounds and stuff are down there and have the residential people come in and complaining about putting electricity in a, a transmission station down there because when the power goes out, they're gonna go dark. I mean, reality is reality and, and, um, but the roads, you know, we have a lot of citizens in this county that lived on an oil road that now is gravel. And the oil roads should be gravel because several of them, the one past my place has been bad for years and years and years. And the new one that they just finished down the Walsh Town Road has got big splits and cracks down through the middle of it already. It was built last summer. It's.
So it's still.
Roadbed separating, you know, there's, there's cracks down that run parallel with the road like this wide down through the lanes in that road already.
So it'll still be growing weeds.
No.
So it's, that to me, you can't, you know, it's like when the Napa Junction thing got built. And, you know, the, the problem I've always tended is when they come in and want to build something like this, they all come begging for tax increment financing and all these, all these give me's. And now that Cargill owns it, they could have built a four lane highway from here to Florida City and never batted an eye. But now.
And a gas line.
We've paid for all that and the gas line and, you know, and the, you know, they, was to talk there about a ethanol plant there, but from what I know about that, that there's not enough water to supply there in the area to be able to do that, cause ethanol plant takes a lot of water, but, but either way, I think that we have to figure out some way other than the fact that all of our property valuations just went way up to fund or to, to build that infrastructure back, because if you don't have that, you won't have to worry about developments happening out there if, cause my son-in-law put that, that dog kennel in and it's tough to get people out there when the mud is this deep and the roads are sloppy and even though we're only a quarter mile off the highway, to get people to come out and get their Cadillac dirty driving and bring their pep in there. And, you know, it's just, it, it's, it's not an issue that just showed up this week. It's been twenty-five, thirty years almost that this has just been getting worse and worse and worse and worse and worse. And until we take the wool by the horns and figure out how to get it going, it's not gonna get better fast because it costs too much money to do anything, um, to get it done right.
Well, I think you have to throw internet in there as well, as long as water and roads and all of that, but I wonder if the county's ever considered like hiring an economic developer? I mean, the county commissioners do fine trying to plan things out, but you're also at the mercy of an election. So you have a great idea, but you can't see it to fruition because you're voted out. Or you need someone almost to guide the county saying, we'll take informa- you know, guidance from the county commissioners, but here's a person who's good at grant writing and finding funding and can help sell that vision to the rest of the county. And I was wondering if that was even a possibility as well.
Are they talking about that right now though? Wasn't there something in their meeting?
In the strategic plan, yeah, that's one of the prior, that was one of the, on the list to be a possible issue. Basically, yeah, they definitely want to, so many things are tied to that, 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 uh, it will be in the future plan and yeah, but, but like I said, for even, even if you get grants and things, there's a lot of things that have to fall into place to, to make that happen. But, um, but yeah, that's definitely gonna be one of the, one of the priorities to, to keep discussing.
One of the organizations that I was with, oh, several years ago, they had a professional grant writer on staff. That's all that person did and that's all their job was, was to go out and research where this money was, you know, and it might be some little podunk kind of business or not business, but university someplace or some little endowment or something that was, had a soft spot in their heart for this thing or that thing and they had, you know, millions of dollars to give out and, and that person knew how to search that out and.
Yeah, well, right now, there's, there's a lot of money out there, federal money, state money. So I don't think money's necessarily the issue and, and grants, I think the issue is, is what can we do, like you said, building the roads back up and what other things can we do to actually bring various types of businesses in or affordable housing in and, and those kind of things, cause that's the hot topic right now too, is people are understanding that e- even if we want to bring manufacturing things in, if we don't have the housing for them to stay at, you're wasting your time and, and so that's, that's definitely a priority.
Nice to get the small communities together too, to see what land you have that's abandoned or no one's lived there forever and can the county take it and so can they turn it into something or resell it or, or some way to, to make it suitable for development of some sort, even if it is a, a pocket garden or, you know, maybe some elderly housing or whatever is necessary. Cause you're seeing that to our neighbors in next county.
Yep.
Where they're bringing some big stuff coming in and it's, it's like, oh.
Well, definitely, there's no doubt that the cheaper we can make it for, for people to do housing and things by having some lot that, that would be really cheap for the county to, to hand over or for one of the towns to hand over, definitely makes a difference and that helps.
I think towns don't realize that, yeah, someone may want to buy that in the future, but if you do it now, it may cost a small town, you know, two or three thousand dollars to clean it up and that's, in the end, you're gonna recoup that long-term throughout the rest of the existence.
And one of the things we plan on doing is we plan on having a, um, a meet, a few meetings in the near future and try and build some, those relationships too, if you have partnerships to, to go forward on some of those types of things. That also helps.
I was gonna, I was gonna say that too, the small towns around, um, do offer us a solution to a lot of these issues we've got because you, I mean, for the most part, they've all got a decent road to them. They've got already, you've got a concentration of housing, so it's not an issue there.
Utilities.
You've got utilities, you've got everything there and then also affordability compared to like in Yankton or out by the lake or whatever. So, I mean, it fixes a lot of our problems, as far as like a zoning commission, how do we like encourage, like say like a small town like say Utica to be able to, um, annex more property around there that falls under their jurisdiction or whatever, how do we do that?
Yeah, we tried to do that, just not too, a few months back, but, but, um, but you know, there are a lot of things out there and a lot of thought processes, uh, when Bill and I went to the, the Western Planners Conference, one of the things they were discussing was a senior community and, you know, building houses that are just one level, no steps, you know, shorter distances to the streets or if it's in a town where they have curb and gutter, do the cutouts, all those kind of things. If there was some developer out there that wanted to do that, would we be ready to, you know, maybe only have it twenty feet from the road right away versus thirty, that type of thing, so. So there's a lot of different ways you can tackle those things.
Small communities may just need help seeing the vision or the possibility and I think it can't be done, hey, you've got ten minutes to decide this.
Right.
You know, cause that's gonna freak you out.
It's a process.
It's a process and they have to start having that conversation already, hopefully. So that it, so they can get in their head like, hey, we have to figure out a way to keep going because eventually we may not be viable anymore because everyone's leaving to the big town, cause we have no, nothing to offer them.
Well, it's kind of tough too and just, I'll use Utica for an example, is the fact that the businesses that used to be there, you know, and, you know, even though they had a grocery store or something like this or whatever like that, that, something that would make the people that want to move into a community like that not have to get in their car and drive to Yankton all the time, you know, I mean, or, you know, and, and but it has to be viable for the person that does that because that's why they all went belly up or closed because they couldn't stay, couldn't survive in today's market, I mean, it just, you know, there's a few, you know, like Tyndall and some of those places, I know a lot of people that go up that way to shop, you know, get groceries and stuff. And that guy does a good job, but he owns grocery stores in about six or eight of them little towns, so he can buy enough volume to where it can make it work, you know, and something like that, but you gotta have the community support and utilize that to make it stay viable for him, so.
So I think one of the things, uh, like you were talking about internet, uh, if I remember right, a few years back, uh, this was before your time Gary, uh, there was, uh, South Dakota internet wanted to put up a big flagpole out there and use it to transmit internet to all Riverside acres and that was denied. I know South Dakota internet, uh, used, I believe, some of the grants, uh, to get internet down to like that Bucks RV park that came down and he used it to go to Three Suns and provide internet, um, using those grants. Like he would be a good person to have in contact, cause he knows, uh, about those infrastructure things. And so I transmit my own wifi, uh, and I provide internet to all of my campers. And it is way easier to transmit than it is to do COAX or Ethernet or fiber through everything. Granted, South Dakota internet did do fiber to all of, uh, Three Suns RV park, I believe. So I think that's a big thing as far as if we can keep our minds open to, for the better of the people. I know variances are tough, uh, like for instance, the one we just went through. It's, I think we just need to be a little bit more flexible to get people what they want, uh, to help the community. Like I know my neighbor is having issues with his garage because we have triangle lots. So the setback is on like three sides or whatever. There was another lady, I think, who wanted to build next to my house, she was kind of going through the same issue as far as uh, helping out her parents or, or whatever and they wanted another place to live next to it. That would help in development, uh, infrastructure too. If I remember right on, I don't remember if I talked to you about this Gary, on Eleventh Street, you know, that rezone we just did for all that residential out there, I don't remember what it was, it's just past Eleventh. I don't remember what it was, it's just past Eleventh, they were having those issues with BY Water. Um. I had the same issues on my RV park, it just all has to be engineered. Uh I couldn't even get water, BY said, nope. This has to be engineered and that falls on the developer, not the person who bought the land. So like in town, if it's Kirby Hofer uh who does the lot or land, he's in charge, he has to do. He has to pave the road, he has to do the sewer, he has to have the water, everything there ready to go before it can even be plotted out. Uh to have that in line and most of the time, the developers are the people who know those connections. Uh so if we can set that in our ordinance somehow to where, okay, like you have to have this stuff in line before you. Uh like when the subdivision ordinance comes into effect, when they sell like, what is it, two lots or something out of a section, I don't remember for sure, but. That would help with our roads, you know, so roads have to be planned out, drainage, um internet, you know, water, sewer. Whatever it is, septic, any of that stuff, uh I think that would definitely help out, especially if we got BY Water into the conversation. And I know that's probably gonna be tough. But like those people from from what I know, uh on Eleventh Street, I wanna say it was like Schwartz or something like that, I could be wrong. But anyways, like they thought they were good to go and then BY Water said. There's no plan here, like we don't know what to tell you, there's no water until you do it, like. I was gonna build on Kaiser Road and they said they were out of water and it was like a hundred thousand dollars to bring the water line from. Four Thirty Fifth, uh just over a quarter mile down uh to where somebody lives now. So that person split the cost with another with their neighbor to get it there and then BY Water's policy is. Uh for like it's yours for a year, whatever, and then anybody else can tap off. So it's it's a Mexican standoff, like people to sit there waiting for the other person to do it and then they get it for free. Well, not for free, but eleven hundred bucks or whatever.
The way it worked though because I did the same thing and and uh it was, this was twenty-five years ago already. Had to pay for all the engineering, pay for all the stuff and then it was supposed to run a parallel line onto it and then it was my responsibility for the first two years. And then after that, it became BY's and then they could hook anybody onto it.
Yeah. And I I've ran across that in the past and I understandably, I mean, they need, they need to know how many lots and things. Are are going into an area to make those determinations, but when I was in Scottsdale, uh we also had a. We had a payback system to where, yeah, if the developers put in a line for the first ten years. Anybody that tapped into it had to pay that percentage of their lot frontage and then after the ten years, the city. Got the money to plan for further development, so so there are things like that out there also, but. Yeah, obviously, it shouldn't be free for people to tap in once a line if somebody else paid the cost to put it in. They should be able to get their share back also, so that makes sense.
Yeah.
That was one thing and I don't know, Gary, the information that they sent you or anything like that, but. And I know their policy is really kinda set in stone about if you go and apply, you have to pay them money upfront and then they'll. Tell you whether there's water available or not. I mean, and then you get maybe part of it back if you don't hook up.
You don't get any of it back?
Yeah.
It's sixteen hundred bucks to apply and and if there's nothing, then they tell you this is what you need and and that's it. And they will not, it's either half inch or three quarter, I wanna say it's half inch tap, they won't go over that ever. So like with my RV parks, I have to create that volume within my pipes. Uh in order to in order to get water to everybody there. Um and then if I need more water pressure. All I can do is do multiple taps and that's it, you know, that's.
On your RV park, do they put a half inch tap?
Isn't that crazy? Half inch tap for seventy sites, uh and then a half inch tap for. Uh eighty and then a half inch tap for sixty-five. And engineering pull plays a big role in that, everything's looped, the 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 water sizes have to be perfect. And then you have to reduce at the to bottleneck it at the site to create pressure. Uh it's and that's all, you even have to have it all engineered through DNR, uh through the. No, darn it. Uh something McIntyre is his name, but it's a separate than the septic system, you have to have it all engineered. Like I had to pay ten thousand some dollars to have it engineered and then on top of that, the whole thing for that whole section of Christiansen's Land. When they wouldn't give the coffee place water, uh for even a sink tap, they wouldn't do it until that whole engineering was done. On that entire place, which like you said, makes sense cuz what if they are pulling too much? That six inch main goes, guess where, straight to Riverside Acres and if I'm pulling too much water or they are. That cuts supply on an entire village pretty much down there, so.
Well, the main thing here is like we said, is that, yeah, everybody needs a lot of information to to get these developments moving forward and things. And and uh we all understand that there's a lot of challenges with everything to to uh that they have to deal with also. And so, uh is there anything else that anybody?
One more thing I actually wanted to mention is a great tool as far as loopholes with DNR uh is PUDs. So you're only allowed a certain amount of acres, uh it's it's either a half or one, I'd have to go look. It might even be one acre for a septic system. So if you do a PUD and it's not all lotted out within that PUD. You can do, let's say, let's say the county said the setup would be, like say it's, what is R one? Or no, R two is one acre, right?
R two's half an acre.
Okay, so.
R two is one acre.
One acre.
Yeah, R two's one acre, so let's just say we did, let's say it was R two and we did a PUD on it and none of it was lotted out. Um let's just say, uh my lake, uh or my property out by Utica. If we were to do half acres there, but it's not lotted out, then I can do like it, it's it's hard to explain, I guess. Let's say there's fourteen acres out there, instead of doing fourteen houses, um the county allows me to do a PUD for twenty-eight houses. Then uh each one, I could do a septic system as long as it's approved through DNR. I could do that and have more houses lotted in there because it's not lotted out. And it meets the one acre for DNR and that can be done, that can be done anywhere as far as. And I'm not trying to, you know, do that, whatever, but uh it's it's a great tool to get more housing and affordable housing.
You lost me at the getting around DNR, like, no, I can't hear this, I'm sorry.
Well, that's one of their approvals, pretty much. They, yeah, they say, yeah, that's fine, you can do it as long as you do a PUD.
One of their checkbox is you have to have an acre for each lot, but if it's a PUD and then it doesn't, then you count the whole lot for that.
Exactly, yeah.
House Bill ten ninety, it's on the governor's desk. The bill you were talking about, HB, ten, it's on the governor's desk.
It is, okay.
March seventh.
Okay.
So I don't know if she's got seven business days or seven day, I'm not sure, but and I haven't heard anything if she's videoing it or gonna approve it, so. I just wanna say with Chris, I think the thing about it is when I we got our packets and I was looking at the official zoning map. It's all white. But yet, when you look at the map for, you know, allowing animal confinements and or, you know, our whole county is off limits. It doesn't make sense and that's what goes back to what you said.
Yeah, and I guess if anybody's interested, I did put together a map of the Ag Zone District in Yankton County with the setback for. The for a CUP for animal feeding and if you circle each house, there's virtually.
Think Don did that with District Three and one of those ones on the wall by the wall there.
His was on, I think, a different one, but I updated it for the one that's actually in our ordinance and there's virtually nowhere. In our county that you can approve that if you have one person that says no.
Yep. And I go back to roads too, living on a road right now that's in very tough shape, it's just, yeah. And there's a lot of them.
Try maintaining a township road with the Kubota.
And I think.
Cuz they don't come.
Well, the issues with the the township roads, you know, and especially unorganized township roads are really a problem anyway, but. The road pass, my place is actually a county main road and it holds more water in the middle of the road than it runs off. And it's been that way for years.
A lot of the issue with road maintenance on like these gravel roads is the operators don't know exactly what they're doing.
I don't know if we're if we're kinda, you know, if you have anything more, Gary, on that, I do have a question about something.
No, if if that's what everybody, I'll pass this this information on to Don or he'll watch the meeting too, I'm sure.
On the the plot and the um variance to tonight, uh that was for Fricks, um I have a question. In the ordinance, we have the existing farmstead. You know, area in there, so you can issue a variance for that.
Right, a plat, yeah.
When does that come into, how old does the farmstead have to be for that to come into effect?
It doesn't really specify.
And that's what I'm saying because I know the intent back when we did it was, if you could find some old concrete or some. Old plowb shares or something laying there, well, there was an old farmstead here, we can do it. But this this particular deal, there was no, there's never been a farm place on where that house.
That's what I was wondering by looking at it, looked like a fairly new construction.
He built that house.
Right.
Oh, he's he's been there a while.
They said twenty-two years, I thought.
That right away, the township did in two thousand and two, I believe.
But was it there before zoning?
No.
No.
Well, when, yeah.
It put it right there, it'd be, they said twenty-two years, so it'd be like oh one and zoning was what?
Yeah, oh three or oh four.
So it'd be pretty close, I I don't know for sure.
Yeah, that original plat was before ordinance, I looked at.
Well, the original, the original.
Plat.
And that was bought from.
But I was wondering about the house being built and then that shed being built back in there because they there was not a a site there and. And I'm concerned that that, okay, so if we if we go along and we gotta be a little bit careful about using that exemption on things. Because if I go out and take twenty acres out of my farm and plot it and build a house and a building there and in ten years. Wanna plot it out into smaller units because, well, it's, you know, it's a farmstead there and I can sell off eight acres and.
Right.
And I can sell off another eight acres and I can just do that.
Loop hole to.
It's a loophole, yeah.
To get around the twenty acres.
Some way we gotta figure out, you know, cuz like that was my my question was that what point do you determine that it's an existing farmstead? You know, how old?
And we can try and reword that a little bit, they'll put that on the list, I mean, those are, those have been our concerns also. And we've brought that up in the past and and um so we'll keep looking at it.
Well, my way of looking at it is that that exemption was, the intent behind it was for anything that existed prior to the zoning. And stuff that was there, um so that, I think that's how it should be worded, something to that effect. Because like you said, you could take a chunk out of your field or you don't even replat, you got eighty acres there, build a house and then a few years later on. I wanna replat that cuz it's existing into a small chunk and then do another one and another one.
Yeah.
And it does, it does say that it's at the zoning director's discretion, so like I had somebody wanted to build a house. Next to their farmstead and they said, what happens down, ten years down the road if I wanna, well, according to the five thirteen, they can, I said, but if you do it. And then come back right away, I wanna do it, that's probably not gonna fly.
Right.
So it would be nice to clarify that in the ordinance, so it gave us a deadline or a time frame.
But like you said, was said here, if we put in the, write in the ordinance that it said, any would be considered an existing farmstead. Prior to the date of the ordinance coming into effect, so you know, a year before or whatever, I mean, we had no control over that, but at least. And the other thing that comes into issue on that a little bit is how many houses were built after the ordinance that never got a building permit? Or nobody knew about until all of a sudden one day it showed up on Beacon and, oh, by the way, you know, I mean, there's a lot of that that went on. Uh we had one particular one across the road from us that the guy came in, got a ver- a farmstead variance on it. I made the motion cuz I knew the guy and uh left here with no intent of buying the whole piece. He just wanted the house and two days later, they did a quick claim deed on the rest of it and sold it to somebody else. And they put a little mini home out there and. Yeah, I mean, there's there're loopholes that you can't cover with every thought that you make.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, that's that's why you keep looking at the ordinances, are there little tweaks that can be made? That makes sense, but you're never gonna cover everything, every situation, every want to need.
No.
It just doesn't happen, but but um that's, those are the kinda things we need to continually look at.
And people are looking for loopholes.
It's like I said, no matter you change your ordinance, like it's like the the sidewall heights in in these construction, we raised them all two feet. And it was two, the next meeting, there was somebody in here wanting to get a variance to add two, make it two feet higher in the district they're in cuz they wanted to put their boat in there. You know, and it's like.
Well, did that, uh, the guy who wanted to build the shed and the neighbors objected, so they. Uh planned to build a tunnel so they could call it an addition to the house, did that ever actually happen?
That was before, that was Swift, I believe.
Yeah.
I think, I think it did, I don't, that was before our time, I think it was before your time.
Yeah, it was. Garrity. Yeah, there's a tunnel.
It's what?
So it's attached.
I've been there.
Yeah, you know, you're limited to what you can build size wise for detached, but if it's attached, it's considered part of the house, there's no limit. So you built a tunnel to connect them, so it was attached.
There's a tunnel underground.
Yes, yes, next big one, yeah, yeah.
Attached, so.
I never thought of that.
It's bizarre.
So if you let a log chain from house over to ground, is that attached?
It does define, you know, farmstead in our, in our, cuz I was looking at the same thing that you were before, prior to this meeting, trying to determine. Because I know that that house, you know, has not been there, you know, that long and so it does, a place of empirical evidence of previous farmstead. Including at a minimum foundations, structures or a tree belt. But then it goes on.
To what?
Yeah, that's.
That's that's the thing.
That's the thing, it doesn't say that and that's what I was saying earlier is that it's not specified, but but um. And so it does make it hard to to make that determination of where where are you gonna draw the line on one and not another.
Well, and that that was my fear of the thing, you know, and not that I'm totally, I mean, where the house is, no big deal. Other than the fact that once you do it for one, then somebody else gonna come in and they're gonna need a little bit more, a little bit more. And I I think adding in the start date of the zoning ordinance into that.
I think that makes sense.
Anything built pri- it hadn't been built prior to the adoption of this ordinance, that would give us at least a line in the sand. That this is where it's gotta be.
Especially if you can attach, it'd be easy to attach it to a building permit, like for instance, this one, we should be able to see. The building permit, right, on their on their house, what the date was.
You think so?
If it was pre-zoning.
It's already on Beacon.
You can look up old building permits on Beacon?
No, that that when the year the house failed to adopt, he's on.
Oh, for taxes, yep.
Well, how many years are left on the tid for now?
Probably about five.
I think that's what it was, it was like nineteen twenty-four.
Yeah, it'd be close to around five.
So then we start getting actual tax money off of it.
Yeah, my understanding is that. My understanding is that at the end of that, then they have to pay off their, whatever's left on it and then it's full tax, whatever.
Yeah. So it would be nice to get that place filled up.
Yeah.
Get that developed out.
If you have nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, um I don't know if I'm gonna get voted in, uh in the next meeting or whatever, this is my final meeting. I really appreciated working with everybody here, uh Gary and Bill. Uh I know there's been some uh differences in opinion. But I believe we need that in order to have a. But I believe we need that in order to have a good diverse uh board here, and I've really appreciated being here with you guys. Uh, if I don't get uh into the next board, so.
Yeah, I'm up too.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay, well, either way, like, I really appreciate working with you guys, and I appreciate your opinions.
Need a second.
I need a second.
Second.
Oh, you can have it, you can have it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Posed, motion carried, we are adjourned.